Let's start all again. Motion open is open. Is all the bills ready?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Yeah, I got my wrong cat. Uh, motion to open case number forty-three-ten?
Second.
Forty-three-ten? That's the first one on here. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing will be held in Town Hall, Conference Room B, Room 301, third floor, Ten Pearl Street, on July eighteenth, two twenty-four, at seven thirty PM on a petition of Robert DiO, represented by Ambassador Pools, case number forty-three-ten for a variance under the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaw of November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as amended section three point zero, use regulations, three point three point one point three, up point one. Accessory structures relative to the minimum setback from any principal building or structure in order to construct a twelve-by-twenty above-ground swimming pool located at two forty-one Lakewood Drive, further identified in assesses plan two lots fifty-five and fifty-six in an I.C. zone of said Stoughton. Any person who is deciding to receive further notice concerning this petition is provided by the general rules of the Zoning Board of Appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner, a petitioner or his representative or any other person desiring to be heard in this matter should appear at time and place designated. Sherman Uprow Chairman was in the issues of July third and July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is a petitioner here?
Who?
Come on up, have a seat.
Um, my name is Debbie. I'm here from Ambassador Pools. First, thank you for seeing us.
Wait, wait, what's your last name?
Gregor.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing us. We are looking for three feet of relief on the ten-foot setback from any structure. We want to make sure to maintain the six-foot side and rear as to not get too close to any neighbors. I went over this many times and Jack was amazing helping me go through it. There's really not another spot to put this pool where it is a corner lot and the entire front is driveway and septic.
It's a long driveway. Yeah. Just pulled it up.
Mail? Any questions?
Not right now.
Jeff?
What are the dimensions of the pool that's proposed?
It's twelve by twenty.
Okay, I just saw that. I want to make sure it's a pool. Any thought given to a smaller pool?
This is the smallest pool that we carry.
I'd like to hear what the other people have to ask.
Jerry?
Um, this is not going to be attached to the house by a deck or anything?
No.
It's totally be freestanding?
Yes.
And it'll have the fold upstairs and the?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
I agree.
Why are you? Has there been any thought given to moving the deck to the other side of the pool?
Um, that deck on the end?
Yep.
The, either way, the pool would be the same size no matter which way we turn it. So that seven feet actually gets narrower as we go because of the tilt of the property line. So if we turn it, it's still going to be seven feet on that end. And this is to maintain the six-foot side setback. We went as close to the widest part of the yard that we could.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, the gap would get smaller.
If you move the deck to the other side of the pool, you'd have less, it'd be a deck rather than a pool with, closer within the house line, right?
It would be the same.
It wouldn't?
It would come out, so the setbacks I have shown on here are with the deck.
Right. But the setback is from the house or from the other porch? Jack, is that setback? Where's the ten-foot separation requirement from the house?
Well, it-
Or from the porch?
I don't know where the porch is, but from the house, it would be ten. If they were to move it parallel to the back line, they'd be at ten at that point, but they'd be at seven at the other point. So it-
I'm not suggesting moving it parallel to the back line. I'm suggesting putting the deck on the other side of the pool.
Right.
There's an eight-foot deck, so that would move the pool closer-
Away from the house.
Yeah, away from the house and more into the yard.
It still has to maintain the six-foot set, offset from the property line.
No, because it's still a six-foot setback to the start of that deck right now.
I, I think I understand what you're saying. The length of the pool would still be in the line of the house.
Yeah, but not as much. Right?
Yeah, well, I, what you're saying is if you put the deck where it says twelve-
Right.
If the deck is there, then that much less of the pool is near the house.
If that's what gets it done, that's fine.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think that's, the whole idea is to try to make this as non, as conforming as you possibly can. So if that's something that's feasible, it would help. I, I need to understand a little bit more about why a above-ground pool structure has to be set ten feet back from a house. I, I don't understand that rule, so.
Well, any accessory structures, ten feet. So whether it's a pool, an in-ground pool, above-ground pool, or a shed, it's ten feet away from the house.
So an in-ground pool would be required to be ten feet as well?
Yeah.
And is there a reason why the idea of a pool being away from the house? I mean, what's, what is the reason behind ten feet?
Most of those teenage boys don't jump from their good things away.
Okay, I mean, that's-
Safety.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So, so the more, the further away from the house we can make that pool itself is certainly better? Yeah, okay. Okay, that's, those are my questions. Thank you.
So how do we leave that? We leaving the, the deck where it is? Are we trying to move the deck to the other side?
Are you guys comfortable with the deck on the other?
Yeah, if we move it to the other side, that's fine. Does that mean we have to come back or?
No.
Or we can make it a condition?
Okay.
Okay. So six free, it will be six feet from the edge of the pool now, not the deck?
Great.
Because we're going to shift the pool. Okay.
Which gives you eight, I, I'm not sure. You said an eight-foot deck. I don't know if that's eight feet wide or eight feet-
Um, out from the pool.
Okay, so width. So that'll move the pool eight feet over?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's, the further away you can get from parts of the house, the better in my mind, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Um, what'd you say? Septic and the water lines are from, on the front part of it?
Septic, yep, septic water lines and a driveway. And where it's a corner lot, it's two fronts.
Oh, I know what it is.
So.
Very well. Okay. I have no problems with that. Is anybody in the audience that has any, that's here for this or? Nope?
Or online? Anyone online for this?
Oh.
Probably not.
Any, I wouldn't even know how to get them. Anybody online that has a-
Yes, hi. This is Jamie Bogamell and Jen Nichols. We're actually in twenty-five Cedarwood, so we're Rob's neighbors with the property line. It's adjacent.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, Bob.
I don't think we have any concerns about it. Just trying to understand if somebody could clarify what the setback is, I guess, from the, the property line, the stone wall that basically separates our lots. We just, we're having a hard time here.
Another question?
Yes, it's the six-foot.
Yeah.
And that's the-
At the narrowest spot, right?
Yep.
Okay, so six feet off the stone wall, essentially?
Yes.
At its narrowest. It's not running perpendicular to that wall.
Okay. And so then, when you guys were talking about flipping the deck location, that doesn't, that doesn't affect that distance at all, correct?
Right, but the deck will now be six feet away rather than the pool. The pool will be a little wider.
So the deck is closer to our property?
Not less than six feet, but it'll be the, that'll be the, the closest point to your property will now be deck rather than pool.
I just kind of feel bad for our neighbors with that arrangement because I would think they would want the deck closer to their property, but-
It's really going to be six feet from either property.
Yeah, right. It's six feet either way.
Okay. Okay.
We're, we're totally fine. We're, we're good with the project.
They're, they're okay? Is that what you said?
Yeah. Thank you.
And there was another gentleman that was in here that said he was fine with the, with the pool, one of your other neighbors, I don't know who it is. Okay, what's the wish of the board?
Um, so I guess I would move that we make a finding that the property is unique with regard to its soil conditions and shape, in that it requires the septic system to be, is it a well as well? Just a septic-
No.
Septic system to be located in the front of the property and it's also on, on a corner lot and uniquely shaped in the rear? And that we make a finding that by virtue of the conditions of this variance, we're addressing as much as possible all the safety concerns that are associated with the ten-foot setback from the house requirement. And then I'd move that we grant the variance with a condition that the, the deck and be flipped to the left side of the pool as shown on the plan.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate your time.
I think you might have to get a bigger pool if you're going to get us all in it though.
We do have the sixteen thirty-two, but I think that's really pushing the lines.
Turnpike Street. Definitely a unique little piece of land. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion open case number forty-three-eleven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing will be held in Town Hall, Conference Room B, Room 301, third floor, Ten Pearl Street on July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven thirty-two PM on a petition of KLG Stoughton Realty Trust, represented by Kevin M. Riley Esquire, case number forty-three-eleven for a special permit under the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaw of November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as amended by section three point oh, use regulations, three point one, three point four, table of use regulations, section three point one, point four, table of use regulations, accessory uses, item number seventeen, accessory retail store in an industrial or warehouse building providing it as selling their own product in order to allow for the sale of vehicle parts located at ten seventy-four Turnpike Street, further identified in assesses plan ninety-two, lot three, in an industrial zone of said Stoughton. Any person deciding to receive further notice concerning this petition is provided by the general rules of the Zoning Board of Appeal should file a written request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner, his representative or any other person desiring to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Sherman Uprow Chairman is, it was in the Patriot Ledger on July third, two thousand and twenty-four, and July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. You'd like to explain what you want to do?
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Kevin Riley, my attorney from Logan Randolph, here on behalf of Tim Galvin, who's with me. Tim is the, Tim and his wife are the owners of both the land and Metropolitan Truck Center, which is the tenant on the premises. And basically what we're, what we're about tonight is to sort of legitimize, if you will, a longstanding use on this property, which is the sale, the accessory sale of motor vehicle parts, truck parts, if you will. This is, you know, on Turnpike Street, Metropolitan Truck. I assume you guys are familiar with it. It's been there since, since nineteen eighty-two. Tim bought the business a number of years ago from his longstanding friend and partner, Bob Arnold, who's also here. And there is, and has been, in the premises, a small retail shop, if you will, about two hundred square feet in, in its size. I've got a couple of, couple of pictures of it, if you like, to supplement what I had previously provided. So essentially, this is something that is for the convenience of customers. It really is not a separate kind of draw. It's simply the sale of, of retail parts to customers who, Tim and his business service, and obviously they're in the business of truck repair and truck chassis build-out. So Tim, since he's purchased the property, has made a number of improvements, the parking lot, so forth. I think the, you know, the premises itself is, is well-maintained at this point. This is a small use, but a, a necessary one, both to the business and a convenience to the customers. And I think, you know, further facts and such are set out in the memorandum I submitted along with the application.
That's all you got to say?
At the moment. Keep it short and sweet.
Any questions?
So you said you're just selling basically parts for repairs on the trucks that you guys are, or?
Yeah, in other words, I, it wouldn't be a situation where necessarily, you know, you would come in off the street and that's not the business that they're looking to service, you know?
Okay. So only question I got?
That's it? Jeff?
Why is this denial decision from nineteen ninety-seven in the packet? I guess I'm-
Just the, the packet asks for history of other actions that were taken by the board or the town over the course of time. So that was a request actually to sell motor vehicles at that time.
Okay.
Which was denied, so just-
And you don't sell motor vehicles. Now you're just servicing them. Okay, I, I got it.
Yep, just as, for completeness sake, if you will.
And, you know, you went to get, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so you, you went and at one point asked for this permit. What happened, happened. Now you need a permit to do what you're doing now, but is, what changed to?
It's, this literally was for the sale of, of motor vehicles.
Right, but for the work that you are asking for a permit for?
That, that has basically been there all through time. And the way that this came about is, was it February of, of this year? Code enforcement did their inspection out there and said, oh, wait a minute, you're selling, you know, parts here. You need a special permit to do that. That's not repair of motor vehicles technically. So, you know, as an accessory use, we're, we're asking for that to, to continue as it's continued for many, many moons.
Okay, thank you.
All set? I don't have any questions. All right.
Jeff asking questions? Thank you.
You say?
He doesn't have any questions.
She said I did a good job.
Did I clear my ear here? Okay.
Not being a regular person, is that, is that unusual? Is that, is that? It is, okay.
Those are my questions.
I, I know this business pretty well. And I've-
I think you were here back-
I've been in this area quite a few times. They actually sell parts for plows a lot and a lot of the parts to repair some of the trucks, so. I have no problems with it. I didn't realize it sold, but you're not going to look, you know, if you're looking for to sell the trucks, we had nothing to do with it. Then you go before the selectmen.
Right, right, yeah.
And I know that they always had a clean operation there, so it's, it's, um-
It's interesting, interesting to-
Did you keep running that?
Interesting to go by there. A lot of changes apparently coming across the way and it's, you know, a section of town that's-
He kept it pretty well.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I have no luck.
Appreciate that.
Um, is there anybody in the audience that wants to ask questions or speak on it? Wow. This is going faster than I thought.
Chair, I do have a question. This zoning decision is not for the sale of motor vehicles.
The what?
I mean, I believe our zoning bylaw has changed since. But the zoning decision that you included was for an accessory retail store selling its own product. You have a different history piece of use of that that said, from nineteen eighty-two, that says you can't sell newer used cars or trucks.
Yeah, so this is the nineteen ninety-seven decision? Is that what you're referring to? Yeah, and if you look, A, the last sentence of A, this, one of the findings that was made is that the selling of vehicles, automobiles or trucks is not permitted in any zone as an accessory use. And that was what was requested, so.
So we weren't asking for accessory use, item eighteen?
Not the sale of parts, no. It was for the sale of, of actual motor vehicles at the time, yes. Different, different request. I think that's, that's worn out in the minutes of that meeting. I'm backing through those.
Just need to clear up the record.
Okay. Um, I, I have one more question, too, just to close upon something, so. And Mr. Chairman, do you two, Mr. Erickson, the, the inspection that, that resulted here, was that because of any kind of complaints or issues with the location or just kind of a general?
No, no, it was, it was just, um, we have a new zoning officer and he's been working at just finding things, so.
Okay.
He brought this up to me and I said, look, I bought plows there, so, you know, I think everybody's bought a plow. So.
So just general due diligence and not in response to any-
No.
Okay, no, thanks for clarifying.
Okay. What's the wish of the board?
Do we need hours of operation on this?
Uh, you can put it down, but they, they're only open during the day and the only time they're open, I don't know, are you going to stay open late when we have snowstorms?
Absolutely.
We typically put that down for the accessory retail store? I can't remember.
We did it for, um, the rental place.
Cat, cat?
All right, so. Hours of operation?
Seven to five. Seven AM to five PM.
Monday through Friday, Saturdays at all?
Only, only if it's snowing out. We don't work on Saturdays.
And no Sundays?
About seven to nine.
Seven to nine PM?
Yeah.
Would you, would you have any need for anything more? I mean, typically if there's a snowstorm, would you stay open?
Just like say-
Seven to ten?
Snowstorms are open because that's when plows break down.
No, but if they, we'll, we'll note the start of the snowstorm and then-
Yeah.
Or we can just give them, and then you, typically it's easier to just tell us the extent of how late you're going to stay open.
Five days a week.
Five days a week.
Yeah, but he said they'll work on Saturdays.
Right.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll give them, no, he said if it's snowing, they're going to be open on Saturdays. It's snowing or, you know, it's going, so we'll give them seven days a week then.
Okay.
Seven days a week?
You don't have to be open that late, but if you, you're better off asking for it and not asking for it.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you, appreciate it.
Is ninety on the limit of how late you would stay open or would it be later?
Nine times out of when we, when you break down in a plow, it's about two o'clock on a morning and he's not going to be there.
Nine o'clock is fine.
Okay.
Okay. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit with the hours listed, with the hours stated.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are you enjoying retirement?
Bobby?
Yes.
Looks like you've been down in Florida.
I was. Thank you. I've seen Mr. Kudo. Thank you. I've seen his, I've seen his name.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Case number forty-three-twelve.
Motion to open case number forty-three-twelve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1495.91]
Yeah, but he said they'll work on Saturdays.
Right.
Oh, yeah. No, we'll give them, no, he said if it's snowing, they're gonna be open on Saturdays. It's snowing, so we'll give them seven days a week then.
Seven days a week?
You don't have to be open that late, but if you, you're better off asking for it, not asking for it.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you, appreciate it.
Nine P. M. the limit of how late you would stay open, or would it be later?
Nine times out of when we, when you break down in the plow, it's about two o'clock in the morning, and he's not gonna be there.
Nine o'clock is fine.
Okay. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit with the hours listed, with the hours stated.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are you enjoying retirement?
Bobby?
Yes.
Looks like you've been down in Florida.
I was.
Thank you, guys.
Case number forty-three twelve.
Motion to open case number forty-three twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading, the abutters, and take the answers to question eight as written.
I haven't read it yet. I gotta read it.
Okay.
A public hearing will be held in Town Hall, Conference Room B, room three oh one, third floor, ten Pearl Street on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven thirty-four P. M. on a petition of Michael Catarus.
Catarius.
Carius?
Catarius.
Case number forty-three twelve for a special permit under the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaw of November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, as amended section three point one, point four table of use regulations, residential item number five, conversion of existing , yeah, as of September eighth, nineteen seventy, dwelling of structure to multi, multifamily dwelling provided a total number of units in the converted dwelling, structure shall not exceed four dwelling units. In order to allow for conversion of the existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling located at thirty-eight Phillips Avenue, further identified in assesses plan fifty-six, lot one seventy-eight, in an I. U. R. C. zone in said Stoughton. Any person designed to receive further notice concerning this petition is provided by the general rules of the zoning board of appeal should file a request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner is representative or any other persons designed to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Chairman of the board of chairman, it was in the Patriot Ledger, July third, and July tenth, two thousand twenty-four. I have one piece of correspondence, and it's from Boston Capital, five hundred Turnpike Street, Canton, Mass. It's in opposition to the petition. Dear members of the zoning board of appeals, I am writing to express our opposition to, to the petition, petition of Michael Catarus, case number forty-three twelve, requesting a special permit to convert a single-family residence located at thirty-eight Phillips Ave into a two-family residence. As owners of property located at twenty-seven and thirty-five Phillips Ave, we strongly oppose this request on the grounds of spot zoning. Granting a special unit permit for the conversion without extending the same allowance to all properties in the zone would constitute spot zoning, which is illegal and unfair. If the board intends to consider such conversions, it should apply uniformly across all properties in the zoning category. We, we believe that approving this petition without considering the broader implications for the entire zone sets a problematic precedent and would adversely affect the character and integrity of our neighborhood. Therefore, we respectfully request the zoning board of appeals deny the permit of Michael Catarus unless it is prepared to grant similar permits to all eligible, eligible properties in the zoning category. Thank, thank you for considering our concerns. We look forward to the careful deliberations on this matter. Sincerely, Boston Capital. All I have for...
Don't we wanna waive the reading of the abutters and whatnot that, we didn't, oh, don't it?
Oh, wanna do that, waive the abutters and...
Motion to take the case as a question eight is written and to waive the reading of the abutters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like to explain what you want to do.
So I'm just looking to turn my house into a two-family house. I'm looking to build, as showed in the drawings, basically a two-car garage underneath with a two-bedroom, five on top. My zoning is a R. U. R. C. zone split down my house. I know R. U., you're allowed to do, granted a special permit. So I was asking to be held under the R. U. zoning to make this feasible.
Um, no questions right now, but I might have some later. Jeff, go ahead.
I don't have my bylaw book with me, but I see one down there. The, the R. U. R. C. split is a new regal in this for me. Is it not permitted? Can anyone tell me if it's not permitted in R. C. with special permit, but is in R. U.?
It's prohibited in R. C. It's prohibited in R. C.
God, having a property in a split zone like that, it's...
So where's the split?
It's unfortunately for you, the split is entirely, this would put, the entirety of what you're doing is in the R. C.
So we're talking with Jack over time to come about this. We're asking, because the main house is in R. U., we want to attach it to it, the address will be still thirty-eight Phillips Ave, which is mainly in the R. U. zone. That's why.
I realize the address would be, but the entire garage and two-family, or second family, based on the line, there's nothing about the addition that would be in the R. C. zone. And I don't see, unless I'm missing it, I don't see anything in our bylaw that allows an extension of use into a, into a neighboring zone, but maybe I'm missing that.
Okay, so the way I looked at it, I mean, I spent a lot of time, it come to me for a couple of different things, but this is the best way we massaged it in. And the way I looked at it was, the, the proposal of what we wanna build is allowed where it is. It's not allowed where the, where the house is now, but it's allowed where it, where it's going.
No, it's the opposite, though. The R., according to this map, the R. U. zone is where the existing house is, and the R. C. zone, where it's prohibited, is where the proposal's gonna be.
I got, I got the arrows.
Yeah, that's right here. That kinda helps.
There's also this picture, so I, I see it twice.
That, that is correct.
Because it's going here, right?
Yes.
So this is R. C. in the green. That's where it's all gonna be in the R. C.
Wouldn't the address be the one that dictates it?
I think it's where the use is. I mean, the use is located fully in the R. C. I've seen zoning bylaws, I'm familiar with zoning bylaws, that have like a buffer zone built into them, but ours doesn't, unless I'm missing it. Ours is pretty clear that if it's prohibited, it's prohibited. If it's, you know, any use not listed shall be construed as prohibited. And even when I look at like the dimensional boundaries, this isn't falling along a street or boundary line. I, I don't see it in our zoning bylaw. Typically, it would have been somewhere within section three point oh. I mean, I don't think this is spot zoning, like the, the letter said. I don't consider it spot zoning at all. So I, the letter is not the reason that I'm struggling here. I'm struggling with the fact that the use itself is in, in a zone where it's not allowed, even by special permit.
But, okay.
Under our bylaw. So...
I, I, I went by, his address was where his address is and where the house is. I built a, I built an addition for someone years ago. The address was in Bridgewater, but the addition was in, the back of the house was in East Bridgewater. I had to pull permits at Bridgewater, because that's where the address was.
Right. I mean, I think that... I think some of that language might exist through section two point two, point four, while you might have had to do something like that with, between the two-town boundaries. But here, we're talking about a zoning district, and the uses are very different. It'd be a different story for me, maybe I could wrap my head better around it if you were just putting in addition, if you were doing something within the structure that's already there. But you're doing something entirely within the R. C. zone, which is just not allowed. That's the issue.
Is there any, any way to go about trying to get zoning into one?
That would be spot zoning. Right, that would be spot zoning. You know...
If you would have put it on the other side of the house...
Yeah, then it'd be in the R. U. zone, and it'd be allowed.
Does he have enough room there?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Maybe not for this size of an addition, but I don't know if there'd be a way to do something here. And I don't know, I drove down the street, I don't know really what you have feasibly in that side of your house either, so. The problem, the other problem you have is that if we deny it tonight, you've got, you've got a timeframe to wait before you can come back to us with a similar petition. I mean, this would arguably be a little different, but rather than having to go through the planning board identifying it as a different petition, you may wanna consider either withdrawing it or asking for it to be continued so you can explore it a little bit more. And then, if you wanna withdraw and refile, it would just allow you to not have to wait out, I think it's a two-year...
Is it two-year, when?
A two-year timeframe to wait if we were to deny it tonight.
All right. Last case I withdraw?
Yeah, I'm not saying you have to withdraw right now. You could ask just to have us continue it to another night and then make a decision after you speak further with people, and if you decide to withdraw at that time. It's, it's your call. I don't mind, but...
Continue, Jeff.
Okay. It's fine. I think we can come up with a night to put it on for.
It would probably be September.
Yeah, I mean, I think he just needs to have some time to talk to town officials and your contractor and everybody else.
Yeah, it's just, it's more, it's more you guys that, that I'm dealing with.
Next meeting is the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, that's in August.
In August, in history.
We got, we got that senior.
Your Tamarack Behemoth Center.
Sorry.
Then the next one after that is Thursday, the fifth, literally the next Thursday.
September fifth?
September fifth, yeah.
Is that okay with you? Okay, I make a motion, we can continue case number...
We don't have, we have enough room on that agenda? We have enough room on the fifth?
What's on there?
What's that?
Do you have anything?
There's only one thing on there right now.
There's nothing on there yet. Motion to case, continue case number forty-three twelve to September fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven thirty-two P. M. There's nothing on there?
There's only what?
Oh, seven thirty-two P. M.
Second.
You can probably look into either...
You can take a look.
Oh, well, hey, did somebody second it?
I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You could probably look in, look, you're putting them to the other side, see if you can get in without, have, change too many sidelines.
Yeah, I'd be alive. This is... Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
You should take a look at the topic, the way it's lined up, as you can see.
Yeah, I did. But we have a zoning district line, but cut through it. Yep.
Can't change the color. We can't change the colors.
Hold on. Request for continuance of public hearing for...
Motion to open case number forty-three oh nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So just a motion to accept the letter?
September four, yeah, well, Kristen gave us this.
Yeah, which she signed. So, motion to accept the letter, requesting a continuance of the public hearing to September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
That's a motion, man.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know, we have somebody on. Sherman, we have someone on who hasn't spoken, so I don't know if Mr. Shea wants to speak.
Hello? Ms. Shea, uh, hello?
Oh, hi. I was just listening.
Okay.